It's Monday, December 6, 2021, and I'd like to bring the meeting of the committee of the whole together. Could you please call the roll?
Thank you.
Allen.
Allen, present. Good afternoon.
Bates.
Bates, present. Good afternoon.
Bierman.
Berman here.
Brown.
Brown here.
Davis. Ford. Fraz.
Here.
Ichbal. Gums.
Gums here.
Kenyon. Kias.
Kias, present.
Kopi. Leonard.
Leonard here.
Lewis.
Lewis here.
Martin.
Martin, present.
Molina.
Molina, present.
Sanchez. Shepro.
Shepro, present.
Silva.
Silva here.
Strathman.
Strathman here.
Surges. Tepey.
Tepey here.
Wallace. Wosniki.
Present.
We have a quorum. Mr. Tepey, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
It stands. A nation. Liberty and justice for all.
Our side finish first.
What?
Our side finish first.
We have to work on the course a little bit, practice a little bit more. Could please have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of August 24, 2021?
Allen moves.
Leonard seconds.
Are there any discussion items edits to these minutes? Hearing none and seeing none online, clerk, could you please call the roll? Allen.
Allen, aye.
Bates.
Bates, aye.
Bierman.
Berman, yes.
Brown.
Brown, yes.
Davis. Ford.
Ford, yes.
Fraz.
Fraz, yes.
Ichbal. Gums.
Gums, yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Kias.
Kias, yes.
Kopi. Leonard.
Leonard, yes.
Lewis.
Lewis, yes.
Martin.
Martin, yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Sanchez. Shepro.
Shepro, yes.
Silva.
Silva, yes.
Strathman.
Strathman, yes.
Surges. Tepey.
Yes.
Wallace. Wosniki.
Yes.
Very good.
Madam Chairman, this is Allen.
Very good. Welcome. So we're going to be moving on now to the presentation, and I am sure that all of you have received a copy of this plan. If you have not, just please let Jane know, and we'll make sure that we get you a copy of this. This is a remarkable document that... Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I'm jumping ahead. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment online? I am not aware of anybody who wishes to speak. Hearing none. Okay, thank you, Blair. So this is a document that I hope the board going forward into our discussion for next year is going to keep close at hand. We're going to be talking about many things during the next year. We've just gone through the process of doing a district map that's going to last us for 10 years, which is going to influence your representation going forward with your new districts. This plan, though, remains intact and is the overlay for future financial planning and policies that are being decided by the board. So it is something we have to keep very close to our heart and to our head and to use as a reference point for all of your committees. So I'm happy that this was suggested to discuss this, and I'd like to thank Mr. Fraz for making that suggestion. And without any further discussion, Mark, could you please come up and then we'll go through this, at least a summary of this extraordinary piece of work?
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm Mark Van Kirkoff, Director of Development and Community Services. On behalf of all of our departments here this afternoon, we appreciate the opportunity to present and discuss the 2040 Plan. Especially want to thank County Board members Barb Wannicky and Drew Fraz for both promoting and recommending this for the newer board members, as well as new municipal officials and their community to be aware of. I want to credit and thank the staff of our Development Department Planning Division and KDOT Environmental Resources and Water Resources and the Health Department for their input in today's presentation. We're all part of this plan, both in the crafting of it and the implementation of it for the county board. And I also especially want to thank Matt Tansley, who spearheaded the PowerPoint, as well as Tom Ricker, Jackie Forbes, Jody Wellnick, and Stacy Zhang for their quick response to our request to pull this together. We have invited members of the Regional Planning Commission to attend the meeting, either in person or Zoom, because this is a plan that they put together and recommend to the board. Today's presentation will cover purposes, history, organization of the plan, as well as focus on what departments and programs are involved in implementation. As you said, Madam Chair, influence your budgeting and spending priorities. We do have a lot to cover. We're going to try to keep this within 30 to 45 minutes and leave some time for discussion and question this afternoon, but I anticipate this will be an ongoing discussion over the course of next year. So joining me in the presentation today are Tom Ricker with KDOT, Stacy Zhang with the Health Department, and Jody Wellnick. They'll be popping up from time to time as we go through this. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So first of all, the 2040 Plan is, this serves as the county's comprehensive plan for our newer board members who come from municipalities. I'm sure you're familiar with the comprehensive planning process. Generally, the components are talking about existing conditions, a statement of goals and policies, implementation strategy, and then a future land use map. The purposes of the 2040 Plan, there are sort of five overarching functions. First of all, and very practically, it's a guiding document and future land use map for your zoning decisions that you make every month. This is the basis for whether you support or potentially deny a zoning petition. Two other important ones are casting a countywide vision for our 30 municipalities. That promotes coordinated planning and land use for having a shared vision of our three areas in the land use strategy. And many municipalities have actually referenced and adopted the 2040 Plan and the strategic plan in their planning documents. And then finally, as we noted, provides direction and guidance for county board policies and funding decisions. And fifth, preparing and planning for population growth and demographic changes. So just for quick reference, these are our current population and what we're expecting, what's being projected regionally. To the year 2050, you can see population. We could have a 51% population growth, 64% households, and 10% employment. So it's a lot to plan for in a continually growing region. As Madam Chairman mentioned, you have a copy of the plan. We're going to kind of cover the three main sections, planning framework, planning issues, and spend most of the time talking about the implementation strategy today. The planning framework is provide some history and background to planning in King County. I'm just going to cover this quickly. But as a county board, you have a long history of planning, one of the leaders in the state of Illinois to be first in with having a regional planning commission and some generalized land use policies, and then the series of the 2020, 2030, and current 2040 plans. The first time the generalized land use plan was adopted in '76, that's really when you see the development of the Fox River Urban Corridor, recognizing open space planning and adding farmland preservation and protection as a value. The process for this planning comes from your Regional Planning Commission established in 1958. It's nine volunteer members that are appointed by the chairman with your consent. They draft and recommend plan, the text and map changes. I listed some of their responsibilities there. Your current commission members are also listed on the right. I don't see any of them here in person. I don't know if any of them are here online listening, but we're so appreciative of their work on your behalf. Drafting the 2040 Plan text and map, this was partially funded by a $360,000 grant from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation that the Health Department secured and wrote into it to have funds used for supporting staff efforts to write the plan. This was written in-house by planners from the four departments represented here today, and it was the first plan in Illinois to really integrate health, transportation, and land use planning under one document. Really, the basis of it, as I noted, is the conceptual land use strategy over, since it was adopted in 1994, the first one. Recognizable and memorable aspect of the plan, just to kind of think about how the plan is organized with a historic urban corridor, an area where growth has taken place but needs to happen in a very critical way, and supporting our number one economy, agriculture, and preserving farmland. This land use strategy has served well. The number of its highlights include a commitment to preserve at least 50% of the land as agriculture and open space, as well as some of our significant transportation corridors. This slide just shows the changes over time. This is part of a document that we prepared for the 25th anniversary of the conceptual land use strategy. It is fun to see how it has evolved and will continue to evolve as the changes for the county grow. The planning issues, these are the planning issues that are in the plan. This is really the meat of the text. Each section has specific objectives and policies. You'll probably be relieved we are not going to review those in detail this afternoon. You can read those for on your own within the plan, but we're going to instead focus on how you're currently implementing these strategies. These are the planning issues. We did color code each issue chapter a little bit by department to help you recognize departments are involved in implementation. A couple of notes on implementation. That was adopted by the county board in 2012. Since then, each board and committee and program has continued to further these strategies. So what does successful implementation look like? We'll run through these quickly, but we're looking at preservation of open farmland and open space, improved environmental quality, an expansive open space system for recreational activities, improved water quality, balance of land uses, improve safety, and safe and level communities for all of our residents. Part of the implementation is we're partnering with CMAP. They have a local technical assistance program. We've done projects as county departments, as well as supported projects with our municipalities. And then in addition, our multi-department team meet monthly, what we call our King County Planning Cooperative, to coordinate our efforts on a monthly basis for grants we apply for. And we do a new e-newsletter that goes out to our municipalities and other planning partners and makes them aware of opportunities like the ARP funding opportunity and other things that help all of us work together. So back to the implementation. We're going to run through these, and this is where our team approach will come in here. So the first chapter focuses on land use in the built environment. Most of these are supportive of the goals I already talked about and are also useful in terms of defending your land use decisions for rezonings and things that help follow the land use plan and use to promote municipalities. And I must say, over the 25-plus years I've been with the county, our municipalities have really advanced in their own planning and buy into the county's comprehensive strategy. But then I'm going to turn it over to Tom Ricker.
So the section, excuse me, the section in the mobility, the section in the plan for transportation is a mobility and connectivity section. And our mission in the transportation side of things is to provide and maintain a safe and efficient transportation system while sustaining the county's vision and goals. And our primary areas that we look at is safety, and this is an area of growing concern with recent years with accidents increasing. So we're looking at a number of different ways in our planning efforts to address that concern with roadway designs and access management. And then the users, all users on the transportation system, personal mobility. It's multimodal in the plan, and it covers highway, transit, bike pad, and ADA access. Cooperative planning is very important. It's a requirement in federal and state process, as well. It's a good aspect for that at the county level. And we have the regional local agency involvement. We look at context-sensitive designs and the protection of right-of-way. While the environment is also very important, we look at transportation control measures that address emissions, reduction in fuel, and reduction in vehicle miles traveled, different approaches to do that, strategies to do that. We look towards improving the road operations and preserving and protecting natural resources, and then stormwater quality issues, as well as best practices, and also landscape treatments. And then system efficiency, primarily focused on the maintenance of the existing facilities, land use planning, mobility, and connectivity. I wanted to talk briefly about our planning efforts. We have a significant amount of cooperative planning requirements. This is required both at the federal and the state level. Because of that, we work very closely with CMAP, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region. Madam Chair sits on the MPO and represents King County for us, as well as a number of staff sit on various committee for the regional planning efforts. They oversee the regional transportation planning and programming of federal funds. And then we also have the King Kendall Council Mayor's. I just wanted to mention real briefly, Jackie Forbes is in the audience. Jackie is the council director, as well as she's also the director of our planning and programming section at King County Division of Transportation. These planning liaisons represent the municipalities, as well as the counties. They administer and program between $15 to $20 million a year in federal funds, and they also do the inter-agency coordination with IDA, the RTA Metro Pace, and the federal, the different federal agencies. Then, real quickly as well, the 2050 Plan, this plan was adopted by the county board on May 11 of 2021. So it's less than a half a year old. This plan was done and is an update of the 2040 Plan. It was done because the county, about every five to six years, receives federal funds for doing the planning updates. And so we've now completed the 2050 aspect and utilized the new numbers that CMAP gave us. The travel demand and implementation is very important. You'll see on the maps on the right, the far-right map is some of the different projects that the county board has approved. And then the center map there shows the different type of traffic growth that's anticipated by the year 2050, with anywhere from 10,000 to 20,000 plus cars a day. The red roads that you see on there are 20,000 plus cars a day above the existing traffic volumes. So there's significant traffic anticipated, about a 59% growth in the vehicle miles traveled in the county. The transit planning efforts are fairly significant as part of the 2040 planning efforts. We looked at various types of strategic approaches, land use policies, service strategies, as well as transit supportive strategies. These efforts are very important because most projects in the county, whether it be a roadway or transit or bike pad projects, they take anywhere from 10 to 20 years to actually develop a project. So this long-range planning effort is required. It's required at the state level. We have to, by law, have a 20-year plan in place, as well as a five-year fiscal plan in place. So a lot of the efforts that you see here are efforts that continue to, if you read this document, we continue to look at expanding our transit program, and also you know some of the recent efforts with the Ride-in-Kane program. And then bicycle and pedestrian planning efforts. We continue to move forward a lot of different aspects. We inventory on an annual basis, existing facilities, planned facilities. We also give best management practices and sit on some of the municipal bike pad committees that they have and assist. We also have wayfinding signage efforts that we've improved along the Fox River, as well as the Great Western Trail. And we're also in the process of updating the bicycle and pedestrian plan. We're looking at receiving here soon some federal funds and starting that process in 2022. There are a lot of other different efforts. You can see in the planning documents when you take a look at them of how we are looking to enhance the mobility and connectivity aspect. I'll be turning this over now to Stacy Zhang, who will address the community health aspect.
Good afternoon. My name is Stacy Zhang. I'm the community health planner at King County Health Department. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the community health assessment and the community health improvement plan process, and how we collaborate with our planning divisions here and many other community partners throughout King County. So here you see the logos on the left. We have our King Health Council logo, which is in the upper left-hand. And that is a collaboration of all of the partners and the funding partners, which are the logos you see under that, which support our efforts in our community health assessment and improvement plan process. So you'll often hear that referred to as CHA chip. So we do partner with our five local hospitals and our INC board, which is our mental health board. And we also have a long list of community partners that participate in the prioritization and the planning. And a lot of our partners bring so much to the table, to our action teams, in order to inform our community health improvement plan process. So we'd not be able to do this effectively without our partners. We do use the map model for this whole process. This slide shows the four assessments that we use, forces of change assessment, local public health system assessment, community health needs assessment, and a community themes and strengths assessment. So many of the teammates behind me participated in these assessments, including our community partners. Again, all of these assessments use different methodologies and provide a really comprehensive report on the health of our community using both qualitative and quantitative data. So earlier this year, after analyzing those four assessments that I just mentioned, we held a prioritization event. And again, we had over 60 key stakeholders throughout our community participate in this event. It was held virtually, and we ranked the health needs that are listed here. And this is how that ranking shook out.
Bates, please. Can I ask a question? Madam Chair? So housing, why is?
Ava, if we may, we're going to, if you can just save it and let all of our speakers present, and then we can ask questions, because I have one right now, but I've written it down, and we'll ask it after someone. Thank you.
So our focused ranking results, as you can see here, we ultimately led to our King Health Council's executive committee voting to adopt four new priorities in King County, and those are behavioral health, which incorporates both mental health and substance use. And this committee is led by Michael Isaacson. It is our Behavioral Health Council. And we have access to health services, which is led by Laura Barrett, our Director of Disease Prevention. We have immunizations and infectious diseases, led by April Elliott, who's our Assistant Director for Communicable Disease. And we have exercise, weight, and nutrition, which we've actually, we've now labeled this NEW, N-E-W, for nutrition, exercise, and weight, and that is led by Uche Anwuta, the Director of Health Protection. The community health assessment that we use to provide the information for these action teams is a really important document that many of our divisions use, and even our community partners use this document for, you know, grants and applications for funding. So our action teams have been working hard over the last couple of months to put their implementation plans together. So they have been doing that. We'll kick off those implementation plans in 2022, and we'll be working hard over the next three years on our community health improvement plan. And I will turn it over to housing. I skipped.
Thank you. We are following the planning issues in order, so we're going to jump back to Mia's minute here for housing. Some of our top four housing policies adopted in the plan encourage infill preservation, rehab of housing, encourage development of diverse and affordable housing stock, prioritize housing resources, and require residential developments to preserve and enhance natural features. That's particularly true with county decisions and subdivisions and rezonings. And a couple of things we did along the way, along with CMAP, were a couple of homes for changing region studies to address housing needs in the central part of the county and the northern part of the county. It's important to note on behalf of the Office of Community Reinvestment that a lot of these policies actually get carried out using federal funds that you allocate through the processes for CDBG and the Home Community Partnership. And here's a list of the variety of things that really help our residents with housing needs, as well as develop more affordable and variety of housing in King County. Agriculture, food, and farm are two mainstays of implementing these strategies and goals. Those are our King County Farmland Protection Program and our Growing for Kane for supporting local food growth. So we are coming up, we are in the 20th anniversary year of the farmland preservation program. Some of the benchmarks of 6,000 permanently protected acres. We're still the only funded program in the state of Illinois. Because of that, we have enjoyed great access to federal funds, and we're so excited. We have a new revenue source in this year using conservation funds. So it actually combines conservation practices and soil protection with the farmland protection easements. Our Growing for Kane program, which has grown significantly this past year with a grant from CompSure, we are able to give many grants to help them respond to and recover from the COVID setbacks. But also, we did an operator survey, and this is a brand-new map I just produced, just to give you an idea that our growers of local food that address food security and access to fresh foods are really county-wide. And these are just the ones that took the survey. So just because there's not a doubt in township doesn't mean that they're not doing so. So that was very exciting to see. In addition, the variety of our local growers from conventional planning, which is the largest category, but livestock and apiaries and greenhouse and others. So we have a lot of variety as well. And because of that, we've been pretty diverse in the programs that we've had. Fresh and Local RX was a grant program that, again, you know, linking with the Health Department, the need for food security and healthy food access. Our kitchen equipment grant program, which helps schools prepare for local foods. Farmer training, which was just completed with regenerative grazing, a mini-grant program, and our program at the JJC that we're very excited about. Open space and green infrastructure. That was a special chapter at MAP showing existing and proposed open spaces. That was a special chapter at MAP showing existing and proposed open space as well as areas that are sensitive for wetlands or groundwater, protecting our groundwater recharge areas. This was later adapted into the Green Infrastructure Plan and MAP as well. And just a note, as you wear two hats, one for the county board and one for the Forest Preserve District, the historically, the open space map since the 2020 open space map have been a guiding document for Forest Reserve District planning and strategic acquisitions for increasing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jody Walnick.
Thank you, Mark. I'm Jody Walnick, the Director of Environmental and Water Resources, and I will be going through the Water Resources and Sustainability and Energy sections. Integrated Water Resource Planning was a large topic within the Water Resources Chapter. Because of this, it gave us a broader view of how water resources impact with our built environment and how they continue to impact the planning efforts at the county as well as the various different ways we see water in our environment, which is through water supply, wastewater and stormwater. And those decisions that are made in those various areas all impact each other and they all benefit each other. So the plan itself is centered around this integrated water resource planning and encourages the collaboration of policies between municipalities and the county for successful planning. So the, one of the major sections within Water Resources is identifying drinking water supply for the growing population in Kane County. It was a key aspect of the 2040 Plan, and you see much of the literature in that chapter centers around that. Regional planning efforts are currently underway with recent funds from the state through IDNR and the NWPA Northwest Water Planning Alliance, using updated demand forecasts for our region. Local scale models for Kane County will be critical to water supply planning in Kane County and will be and will require funding to achieve the goal set forth in the plan. Drought Management Planning Goals will take groundwater governance at a state level, an effort that's currently underway through our participation in the CMAP Stakeholders Group. Water conservation as well is outlanded in the plan and has taken shape the Clean Water for Kane Educational Campaign. This resulted in the lawn watering ordinance that was passed by the Board, public education and outreach events, the Seed and Sod Campaign with support of Illinois-Indiana Sea Grant, and water conservation will play a significant role in reaching a sustainable water supply for Kane County. The section also includes a section on wastewater. It specifies that newly or expanded wastewater facilities are to be owned by a unit of local government. This is important in that we've seen the failure of some of our smaller utilities that were privately owned to ensure the longevity of those utilities. This was an important planning aspect. Promoting water reuse is also included in that chapter. That's an ongoing effort through our work through the Northwest Water Planning Alliance and the state in the revisions to the Illinois Plumbing Code. In addition, we have a member of our staff on the Fox River Study Group, which has been critical in determining pollutant loadings from wastewater treatment plants and the removal of the dams on the on the Fox River. Planning goals for stormwater included the incorporation of best management practices into the stormwater ordinance to achieve greater water quality and volume based goals. These best management practices were incorporated into the 2019 revision of the stormwater ordinance, along with watershed benefit measures aimed to create more practices that impact the entire watershed as opposed to a single practice on a single site. Water quality within our smaller streams in both urban and rural areas continues to be a planning goal that will enable us to better assess the practices in our urban and rural areas and help to reduce pollutant loadings into our streams that end up in the Fox River and address Gulf hypoxia issues. This work involves sampling our small streams and drain tiles and coordinating with the Fox River Study Group Sampling Program as well as outreach and implementation for education, such as the creation of the bioreactor at the Meister Coran Forest Preserve and the construction of a rain garden at the Farm Bureau. Jumping now to the Sustainability and Energy Chapter. Sustainability Chapter is actually new to the 2040 Plan and was not included in any previous versions. As a result of this, we established the 2013 Sustainability Plan, which focuses the efforts on this chapter on county facilities with the pending update to focus on community outreach using the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Climate Action Plan as the template to drill down to actionable items at a county level. The goals in this chapter included facility audits and energy efficiency improvements, such as reducing consumption by at least 10% in county-owned buildings, which was achieved by replacing old light fixtures with more energy efficient models, installation of automatic timers to turn off lights when rooms are not in use, and the replacement of high water use water fixtures. To meet the goal of providing infrastructure to encourage the use of alternate fuel vehicles, the county has established a network of electric vehicle charging stations and added partnerships with municipalities to increase the network within the county. Public outreach is instrumental to the Sustainability and Energy Chapter. Providing educational opportunities to increase sustainable practices in the county achieves many of the goals outlined in the plan. Through the Sustain Kane Program, experts in the field are brought out for seminars on various topics. The Solarize Chicago and tours of solar installations throughout the county increased education on residential solar programs and the number of installations in the county. The No Idle Resolution was adopted by the county board to establish the county's no idle policy. Then outreach and signage for schools and parks has furthered this initiative. Through the Soul Smart Program, the county removed barriers to permit the private solar facilities. Educational opportunities for community solar helped to inform residents of solar options that they are not able, if they are not able to have solar panels on their own properties. The goal of having a revolving loan fund for energy efficiency improvements projects was established through the KEEP program run under Mark Benkirkoff in the Development Department, which provides commercial and industrial building owners with the opportunity to establish a special service area through the county to finance those improvements. The chapter goals include the promotion of small and utility scale energy generation as well. Kane County's Animal Control Solar Project and the forthcoming solar project at the Judicial Center are great achievements related to this goal. Lastly, the county's electric aggregation program has helped reduce energy costs for customers in the program. While electric rates currently match COMEd's rates under the current contract, the customers are achieving EPA's green power through this program.
Thank you. Moving down the list, Historic Preservation. This program goes back to 1988. And I don't read the slide, I'll let you enjoy some of the nice pictures, but we certainly have a rich history and we have a also a rich history in what I guess some people consider the ultimate recycling, continuing to adapt and reuse and recognize our historic sites and landscapes. We have 45 individual landmarks, one historic district, the first and only in Illinois, and four rustic road corridors. You can see we have a pretty good representation throughout the county. Our Rustic Road Program was adopted in the year 2000 and protects some of the unique rural landscapes and roadways that we have. Finally, we have the the issue chapter on Economic Opportunity and Prosperity. The Kane County Board has more recently had more active efforts in the last eight years in participating in regional efforts promoting Y-Kane and having Y-Kane website, taking inventory of some of our top industries, employers, workforce development programs, recognizing significant regional assets that we enjoy like Fermilab and our participation with the Fabulous Fox Water Trail Initiative. You've heard about this initiative and we're going to continue to to work on this. We've now, we had enjoyed more support from some of our federal congressional leaders and state officials due to efforts by our Madam Chairman. And you can see, we like to say we're in the sweet spot of the economic development and prosperity potential as well as access for recreational enjoyment. Another initiative that recently has come to the forefront has been countywide economic development. Of this map illustrates how Kane County is one of the few large counties in the region that does not have a countywide economic development organization. And as I heard one person put it, if we're not telling our story, nobody else is going to do it for us. It's a lot of other people telling their story rather aggressively. So we're hoping to move ahead with doing a strategic plan for the county and organizing and launching a EDO for the county to tell our story. And then finally, the other half of Economic Opportunity and Prosperity for both our businesses and our residents is workforce development. And again, this is a federally funded program overseen by the Office of Community Reinvestment using federal dollars. But this is important because it's so important for our residents who want to get on a career path or change careers to be changing with the the new realities and economy, but also workforce and a skilled and educated workforce is perhaps the number one commodity in today's economic climate for our businesses, both to stay and to bring new businesses into the region. So what's next after all this? In 2022, our Kane County Regional Planning Commission will continue to review and make recommendations to update this conceptual land use strategy in the 2040 Plan. Of course, we'll be working with the 2020 census data and some of the post-COVID realities. Now to sort of prompt some of the ongoing discussion of efforts. On the left on these next two slides are some of the plan goals and priorities. And then in matching color coded color on the right hand side are some of the post-COVID realities that we as a staff have come up with, that we're going to need to anticipate being changes to some of the current objectives and strategies that we're implementing. So there's that one slide. And then this has the the rest of the issues that we'll be facing upfront. So that concludes our presentation and we're happy to entertain questions and discussions either generally or using either one of these slides as a prompter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Much to talk about, much to think about. And I know that you've only skimmed the depth of this information. I would, before we get questions, because I'm sure I know Ms. Bates as well, and I know there's other people have several questions as well. I would like to remind all the board members that if you're interested in a specific area part of this plan, let's say it's affordable housing, transportation, water resources, that you really take a look at the chapter in this book and really study it. And you'll have many of the answers from at least knowledge so that you know what future plans are going to be as we establish financial policy as well as just general work policies going forward, so we don't have to replicate it. So do do use this. Please keep it close to you and constantly refer to it. I think you'll find it to be a very useful document, an important document. So Mavis, I think you had a question. Please feel free to ask.
I was wondering why housing wasn't on that original needs list, but I see the housing came up under its own, its own subject matter.
Okay.
So I don't need to ask my question anymore.
Oh, good, good. Okay, yes, Mr. Martin.
I have a couple of questions, one, I think, which will probably be summarily dismissed. On a transportation issue, I don't think that there's a, I don't think that there's a metropolitan area in Europe that doesn't have a expansive street roadway trolley car system. That, my historic recollection is that General Motors bought out all the street railways in the United States and put diesel buses in their place. Are they no longer considered, are they not a viable option? They always seem so refined when you see them in operation, that it's hard to imagine that they don't work.
You know, I think a lot of it deals with density. Sustainability of transit systems require a much heavier density, anywhere from 12 to 16 units per acre. And so it's really hard to sustain transit options out in this area. It's very hard to even sustain pace routes within this area. A lot of, a lot of the pace routes are actually somewhat helped funding wise from our urban areas to the east.
Okay, well, that's what I was afraid of, is that we just don't, I mean, that's, that's not a negative, but we don't have enough people to make some of this stuff.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it is, it is something, though, that we continue to strive for, continue to plan for. One of the components that you might have seen up there, because I really glanced over really quickly, is that we're looking for transit supportive corridors. And so we're really trying to encourage and meet with municipalities to look at some of the higher density aspects so that we can, I mean, right now, Randall Road does not operate very well for transit, but we're trying to look at putting condos and apartments at different areas along Randall Road to make it more sustainable and to sometime in the future have a better ability to have transit.
Okay. And then I have a second.
Please, absolutely.
Every time that there's a presentation made of affordable housing, there are always photographs of nice modest sized, single family residential homes. And with real estate prices being as they are, it would seem like affordable housing, realistically, at least when you're in the river towns, is is going to end up being apartments. And if you're going to build the the nice smaller homes, you're going to move farther west to Elburn and Canavale and places west and then begin to defeat the 2050 plan. Am I, am I off base with that? I mean, there's the small, small entry level homes can't be built anymore and along the Fox River, I don't think.
Yeah, I think predominantly that might be the case. Habitat for Humanity is pretty aggressive recently in terms of purchasing lots and making those homes affordable.
I'm talking about, you know, real development and that, that just 501(c)(3) efforts at providing.
Sure, I would, I would defer to Scott Berger to address some of those, some of the issues that maybe developers are facing, particularly with navigating the costs and the availability of state and federal funds for affordable housing.
Okay.
And to respond to that, there has been an opportunity that has been passed recently by the state legislature that we are looking into where right now, and Mark Armstrong has reviewed this, where builders are able to do mixed use development and do renovation of current housing stock. And it may be a old apartment store that they're renovating into apartments. It may be an old apartment building that is one of our urban areas so that there are mixed prices within then, within that at market rate as well as affordable rate as well as supported rate. And the more supportive housing you have, which truly is supportive, the tax incentive would be greater. The less supportive housing or affordable housing, the decrease. So it's expandable. And it seems that this is going to be potentially attractive for urban development so that you could have at market rates for a beautiful condo. The same amenities would be in the affordable rate. And affordability is probably right now anywhere for a family of four, an income of about $50,000, give or take.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair Ford?
Yes, Mr. Ford.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. There's a, there's a.
There's a there's a product development in a joliet that is a single-family homes. And some of them are like duplexes. That's a very good example of a of a subdivision, which is have a lot of single-family homes. Also, I have been in other states, I mean, other cities where they have taken and applied single-family homes in developments that seem to work out. And also, they put daycares with them within the same development, which plays a big part with everything else.
That's fabulous. Mr. Fraz.
Thanks, Mark, for putting this together. Yeah, I was just hoping that the newer members could kind of get to know this document. It with development being down for quite some time, it hasn't been used as much as it was. But back in the 90s and early 2000s, I know there's a lot of people in this room that remember that the county was juggling, at any given time, might be juggling five different developments in the unincorporated areas. And this document has just turned out to be a great way for the board and board members individually. When somebody comes to you with an idea and wants to run it by you, you can pull this document out, you know, look, especially at the map that we showed earlier with the three vertical sections, you know, the urban corridor, the critical growth area, and the rural ag area, that you can look at those and kind of get a feeling for, you know, what what the person that is proposing a development will face. And, you know, is the area open, like the critical growth area to development? Is it kind of frowned upon like out in the rural areas? And of course, the urban corridor along the Fox River and Randall's, a lot of times that's municipal and it's out of our hands. But it used to be a really big thing on the county board, dealing with these development projects, probably the biggest topic that used to be dealt with. But it's a great document and I really encourage board members to, as Madam Chair said, get acquainted with it and have it handy for when you do get that phone call related to zoning and land use and development.
And one of the things, thank you for that comment that I'd like to add, and I'm not, please do not take this as anything but an observation. There are things that are coming through the state legislator that directly impact some of the votes you may take. And I'd like to share one that just came to my knowledge. The motor fuel tax was presented to this board for your decision and you opted not to do it. But more recently, I mean, literally recently, now the motor fuel tax can be used specifically proceeds from that to fund sidewalks and bike paths, which is something that goes directly to our intermodal transportation that is mentioned in the 2040 Plan. And I know that there's always a quandary of how to fund that. And that would have been a way to start taking a look at this. So we have to ensure, as I mentioned earlier on, that when we develop financial policies to drill down and see if there's anything that is related to a financial policy that you may be deciding that may have an impact upon future needs of the county. And that it's just education and then decide then what you feel would be best for the county and best for your district going forward on that new knowledge.
Bates, please.
Yes, Ms. Bates.
So I'd like to go back to the statistic that our transportation miles traveled will increase by 59%. I just don't see how that can possibly be the case. And I'd like to know more about the research that goes into this because our birth rate is dropping. How do we get this 59%? Well, here it comes. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I would be glad to look into that further. Again, a lot of it is based upon the projected population and land use trends that we anticipate by the year 2050. And and so that's the number that came out of the modeling efforts, the information that was provided to us by CMAP as well as our own consultants' modeling efforts. And so I'll be able to drill down with, there's a number of different aspects that are within the 2050 document. And so I'd be glad to talk with you in the future.
Okay, thank you. Because if we're looking at even a slightly inflated feature like that, we're going to pave the whole world. And we can't build 59% more roads in Kane County, I hope. I hope we can't or won't. So I'd like to look more closely at those numbers. And where are these people going to come from?
Well, again, these are the projections that the region has adopted as a whole. And I know that since I've been here, that the county's population has increased by over 200,000. And so there is, there is still growth that we anticipate that will occur. As part of it, it's not always answered by pavement. There are a lot of different other means, transportation control measures that can be utilized in order to address some of those concerns. One of the primary things we've been looking at in the last decade is intelligent transportation systems. And that helps to increase the efficiency of the existing system. So there's a number of ways that you can address these needs that are anticipated over the next 30 years without just paving.
Good. Thank goodness. Like synchronized lights.
Nikki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Mark as well and Matt and all our staff members who spoke. You're just always a wealth of information. And similar to what Drew had said, I know we had new members on the board that weren't real familiar with our amazing 2040 Plan. And same with a lot, we have a lot of new leaders in our municipalities. And I think it was really important for our municipalities to know that this is the vision of Kane County. You know, I'd like to quote a former employee of Kane County who's who retired some time ago. What he had said was Kane County doesn't want to become living laboratories like the counties east of us. So I thought that was really a unique, a unique thought. And let's see, what else? And as far as keeping our farmland, Mark, you showed, you know, all those, that new chart that you had about the local growers supplying farm to table in our community. We don't want to lose things like that. We want to retain that, just like our 2040 Plan had said, a goal of keeping 50% of land area and agriculture in open space. And to Mavis's comment, that would help keep, kind of keep down the need for extra roads and widening roads and just keep it more farmland. Yeah, one last thought I had to, you know, when we do look at developments, something that was really stressed over the years were parks in the subdivisions, large parks and walking trails where the children could walk from the one end of the subdivision or ride their bike to the other end. And that seems to have fallen by the wayside a little bit. There's a new subdivision out on McDonald Road, and I've been through it many times. I'm just curious. And I don't see that happening. So it's exactly, yeah, it's just a big rectangle with house, 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 and street, street, street. So anyway, but thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Chair Serge.
Yes, Mr. Serge.
Just a quick shout out to Mark, Tom, and Jody. In my brief tenure with the county, whenever I'm intermixing with the municipalities, they have never made me feel uncomfortable or like I'm hanging, you know, out on a limb or living on an island by myself. They have always been there to be extremely supportive and try and make this easy. But but even with that said, I do, I do think that if I do think we have a little bit of room to go with trying to figure out, if you're a layperson, if you're just a constituent and you're trying to find out some information, you know, I think we have some growth that we can do on how to point people where to go. We're a big organization with lots of branches and sometimes, like, you know, somebody asked me the other day, you know, how is the river doing? And I said, I don't even know what that means. And they were asking, well, you know, years ago, it was extremely polluted. How how is it doing now? And quite honestly, I wouldn't even know who to ask or where to go to try and gather some of that information, other than the comment, I think that we're doing remarkably well. I just can't quantify that for you. So I think that if there's anything that we can do to try and maybe at a website level streamline some of this information that we've worked so hard to put together. And then, and I just, Mavis, I just wanted to comment to you because I oftentimes have that same feeling. Yet, when Audrey and I moved here in 1990, there wasn't an interchange at Randall Road and I-90. We had to get off on Route 31 and take Big Timber to get out to Gilbert's, who had 562 people in our town. And now we're sitting at just over 9,000 people. And we're bitching at Tom because Randall Road and I-90 interchange isn't big enough. And we're just like, oh, my gosh, we didn't even have an interchange just 20 years ago. So it's just amazing on how this growth actually takes place sometimes. And you put the best things, you know, in motion and you don't even realize it until you reflect 10 or 15 years later. So thank you for everybody that serves on this and helps put it together.
Thank you. The Public Information Officer is going to be starting on the 13th, and she'll be introduced to you at our next board meeting. And that is certainly going to be one of her tasks, is to take a look at our website and confer with all of our department heads. And these suggestions, I think, are very smart so that we can reflect back onto the 2040 Plan and have link to the departments so we can have, how's the Fox River doing? What's going on with the Fox River? And link to that. And there can be just some user-friendly photographs, some brief narrative, and with links for those people who want to drill down and certainly learn more. So she'll she'll be meeting with everybody once she gets established and gets her feet on the ground a little bit. But great idea. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, Allen?
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Two things. I wanted to just commend Sheriff Hane for personally taking on workforce development. In our emails, we see all the time that there are opportunities to learn how to get certified using a forklift or opportunities to get a job through a job fair that he is promoting that we can update our resumes. It's just very interesting to see an elected official say, I have people coming through my facilities, maybe it's possible to make their lives better, maybe their relatives, maybe just people coming off the street would like to learn how to drive a forklift. It's an interesting way to expand our people being able to get a job and hold a job. And then I also wanted to say that, Madam Chair, and you were talking about the ripple effect. You never know when you, when you, when you, as much as we try to anticipate what will happen, we pass a resolution and there will be both unintended consequences and there will be good things that happen down the line that we didn't expect. One of those for me is how the world will change, the county will change, with people working remotely. I think many people are grateful to not have to get in their cars and drive to work. I think that many people are very productive in a home situation or a home office situation. There are other people who obviously want to be surrounded by their their peers and colleagues. And maybe what will happen with us all is it'll, it'll be a combination of those things. But certainly, that will affect how many people use the roads and it will affect how people use restaurants and how they, how we build future buildings. If if people are working at home, we may not have to build such large office buildings. It's just kind of, I can't possibly see into the future. My crystal ball isn't good enough, but that's something that's going to affect all of our planning in the future, I think. Thank you.
And well said. And we know, I think, through workforce development, Mr. Ford, that that is indeed happening right now. And I would like to commend, although Mr. Ford is new leadership, he's certainly not a stranger to the Workforce Development Board and his efforts. So I would like to recognize that board and Scott Berger's work for partnering with the sheriff. And I'm sure there has been some conversation and partnership to make sure that those individuals who are choose a different path are put on a better path, a more sustaining path for their their economic development, rather than investigating in the black market to actually get a job where they don't have to look over their shoulders. So well done, well done on that for sure. Are there any other questions or thoughts on this? So I think we're only at the beginning of the conversation. Now, if I may, I'd like to just give you a couple of highlights of things that we're looking at moving forward. And some of the board members are going to be participating in this, but certainly we'll bring everybody on. Route 47 corridor has been a quarter that we've looked at, and I talked to several mayors about this up and down the county. So we're going to be very briefly starting a planning on how we're going to have a Route 47 corridor study that's going to take the north, the midsection, as well as the southern section, and see what the needs are for that and start making some pretty succinct plans. It's going to take some time to put this together, to work on it effectively. But that is going to be a discussion that we're going to be having. The other one is going to be on Wi-Fi development throughout the county as we go further west and south, what the Wi-Fi needs are going to be looking like, whether it's for industry development, making sure that Wi-Fi is accessible. It's on the highways right now, and it's going to be expanded and make sure that the highways connections are continued to be sustained and make them robust. But those areas that may not be directly allocated to the highway, how do we get it to that point for future economic development and for homes as well? So that everyone's schools, everyone has access and good access, strong access to Wi-Fi with high speed as possible. The other, of course, and that was, I just talked about it to Jack Cunningham today, he brought it up out of the blue, is our water quality to make sure that we have sustained water throughout the county. And that is going to be another issue that we're going to be taking a look at and what that looks like. And that is also going to take a look at our future housing development. We do know, and it was mentioned in the 2040 Plan, that having condensed housing is much more economic to our environment than having single-family homes with half-acre, quarter-acre lots. So how do we investigate that? How do we encourage builders to take a look at new ways to build to make sure that they are making the profit that they need, but that also they become good land stewards, which would address parks and walkability, as well as having farms within a development? And those those models already exist in Lake County. So this is not anything that's new for Illinois to take a look at. So these are going to be the conversations that we're going to be having. And if you have any ideas, please bring those forward and we'll make sure that we appropriately put together a small ad hoc committee to investigate it. And as we develop the ideas for it, we can start moving it forward. I do do not want to make any more work for our department heads. They are incredibly busy as it is. But these are simply future planning ways so we can start having an educated board who can make good policy going forward. So those are kinds of the things we're doing as in as a follow-up to this meeting. So if there's no further discussion? Yes, yes, Mr. Anthony.
As a new board member, I want to thank you for putting together this packet. And it made it very easy for me to get up to date or as up to date as I am and to have awareness. So I really appreciate what the effort that went into educating, especially those of us who are new. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. And I think we have to thank the staff for a job well done. Now, I do have one more question before we, the end of this meeting. Mark, you mentioned that there's going to be a revision to this or an update to it in '22. Could you please share what that's going to look like?
Sure, yeah. So basically, the pattern with the last planning efforts has been to look at the conceptual land use strategy, make revisions and changes to that as a precursor to a complete update to the next version of the plan. So right before COVID hit, we had started working with the Regional Planning Commission on discussions on what kind of responses to current conditions, what a conceptual land use strategy change looked like, what are the new emerging issues? And then COVID hit and we kind of...
And then COVID hit, and we kind of put that on pause to be able to respond to that. So we're going to be starting with the, I guess it would be the 2050 conceptual land use strategy, looking at that map and what the major topics are. That would be the new basis for a future land use map. And then, as you saw with the 2040 plan, it really was a multi-department look at refreshing that. Now, since the 2040 plan, as you heard, KDOT has adopted the new 2050 transportation plan so that in effect sort of supersedes and enhances the, the strategies that were in the mobility and connectivity chapter. And again, the Health Department continues to work with their partners. They're going to be adopting a new community health improvement plan. And we will be working on the other chapters. And of course, any economic development strategy and plan would, in a sense, refresh that. So we're kind of moving the balls forward together. But the 2040 plan, really, right now, is the document that kind of ties it, ties it all together and will continue to. I do see we have a couple of our Regional Planning Commission members on the call as well. So they're, they're looking at their calendars now for 2022. And they, I'm sure they really appreciate the feedback and comments that they heard today as well, because they're working on your behalf to bring good information for you in the future. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. And please, please keep us updated on the progress.
Sure, we sure will.
Okay, thank you. So if there's nothing else?
Madam Chair Bates, please. Where can we get these slides? Are the slides available?
Yeah, we will, we'll make these, well, they'll be on the, the YouTube channel, but we'll also be sending these out to all the board members. And would like to work to perhaps post this as a first step for better public outreach. Barbara Nicky mentioned a couple of things for, you know, updating also our new municipal officials and whatnot. So we've got it sort of a, a three-pronged plan. This was the first step to update the county board. We'd like to shorten this presentation considerably so we have something that we can share with our municipal partners, have things posted on the website, and then also use King County Connects as a way to maybe do a series of stories about the 2040 plan and the work that the county board is doing on behalf of all of our municipalities and county. So thank you.
Great. I'd love to have the slides, if you can send those to us soon.
We will do that right away.
Thank you very much.
It'll be done, given tomorrow.
I can wait.
Certainly by the end of the week.
I think I can wait. Thank you.
All right, very good. With nothing else, may I please have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Can I have a rule to adjourn in a second?
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll. Allen?
Allen.
Um, sir, we can have a voice vote, I've been told. All in favor?